All right. So I'm going to assume that Kevin Snack will be able to make it till we have a quorum. So first order of business is pledge of allegiance. But it comes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You weren't here for that first time we did it.
No, I was surprised to see it on there.
Whoever isn't here, the next time they come has to sing the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You wanted to clear the house quick. Everybody wants to be out of here by six fifteen?
Yeah, see, that was supposed to be in the minutes. I gave Dana some. As always, we work from an agenda and I was long distance away and but I should keep track of email. And I did talk with Drew. He was my eyes and ears and came in and took a look at something we're going to hand out in a few moments. But we do work from the agenda and the agenda came out as you see it. I do have a couple of minor updates that I will give you though that came in from Gary today. I think that would be, they're relevant, but I'll squeeze myself in somewhere as we get down the line. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from last meeting. I had a whole bunch of changes and I unfortunately wasn't around to look at this until today. So I forwarded this one to Dana and I figured that she'll make the change, changes and then resend that to us. So next month we'll make a vote on the minutes from last month's meeting. But I think there were a couple of things we wanted to make sure got mentioned in there. So it's a little preview. They could look at your email when you get an opportunity. You gotta send like by two thirty, three o'clock today. Town council updates from Councilman Hoffman.
Just a couple of things that I'll mention. The skate park lighting project was approved as a project, open space project. It was forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. We had talked about that to make sure it was in the scope of the things that we wanted to do for town when we submitted that. So forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, that's ninety percent of that comes from the Department of Natural Resources through Project Open Space. And then the other ten percent is a five percent split each county and the town. So twenty-four hundred and thirty-six dollars, the town will kick in, the county will kick in twenty-four, thirty-six and we'll have a forty-eight thousand dollar project down at the skate park. So we're putting in new lights. I think we, we voted on and the Musco lighting has put out some different options for us and the town council picked some things and so we're going to be doing that project.
There are at least three of us that are in here that years ago, we had something presented to us from just one of the Maryland Association thing commissions. And I know it was during Barbara Lowly's time. It was about lighting in communities. And especially something like that. Gosh, I can try to see if I can find some of them. But in general, the idea instead of the, like you have in Westminster, lighting going three hundred sixty degrees, it's funneled. And that would really make sense. Is it going to be timer on the lighting?
Yeah, there's going to be a whole, yes, there'll be timers on there and you know, not, we're not sure if it's going to be dusted on or how we'll, we'll, we'll take care of that. But yeah, Musco lighting was involved in a lot of those, I think it was called light trespass discussions and things like that. So this should be a nice, a nice project down there once that kicks off. Our contractor CPE, they're the ones that did the paving on our streets around here. They were coming back. It may be done by now, I'm not sure. But they were doing repairs around forty or fifty manholes. So some of the manholes were sticking up in different areas around town. So when we do our snow plowing, the guys, you know, hit it with the snow plow and they get their teeth knocked out. So they were going to go fix forty or fifty manholes and we were still, we still had some of our highway user revenue money available to take care of that for us. So I think that was supposed to be done maybe last week or the week before. I did not see them around, but I think that was on the agenda. And then this happened right after we met last month. There was a water, a water main leak down at Old New Windsor Road and Dickerson's Run. So you, you may have seen some stuff about that, but it was a pretty significant water leak. I think it was a six inch. There was a, one of our bigger pipes going across, had a tough time finding exactly where that pipe crossed the creek. And it took two or three days working with our contractors to figure that out. But what they ended up, they did figure it out. They installed a temporary bypass line for that. They had to put in like a fire hydrant and then a temporarily, temporary six inch bypass. It crosses the creek, so it'd be, so it's not fixed. It has a temporary bypass. It's going to be in place. I think sometime in maybe December they're scheduled, because they're working out in Frederick to take care of that. But we have to get some M D E permits because of, we have to do some stream diversion. And it's very complicated and costly because it crosses that creek. So that's, that's on, on the short term radar for the town's water system. But it was taken care of. We're not losing any water or anything like that. But we do have that to, to take care of here in the next thirty days or so, I imagine. So they were the main couple of things I wanted to bring up.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, good evening. So from my side, I don't have any updates, but I do have several items from last meeting that you requested our assistance. One of those items was updated data for, let me look at my notes here. Bear with me one moment. For the acreage of industrial and commercial uses. I think I emailed that to you, Mark. Ms. Kathleen Comer assisted and I provided that data. So once you're able to review it, let me know if you would like any other changes because the data provider is subject to possible change because we're still pending the designated land use for the Hoff property. And that's another item that I wanted to bring up to your attention. We're, we're pending that designation for that property because, because right now in the maps and the data that we provided, that's still not taken into consideration. So that will, that will definitely have an impact on how many acreages are distributed amongst different.
And this plan, we want that put in this plan.
Okay.
We will, because we've already voted on it to bring it in. And the way this will work is once we get this plan submitted to the town council, that is one of the items that will certainly be pointed out to them. And it'll be up to them whether they want to, you know, have that included or not. But from this body, the decision has already been made to have it included in there. So we will want that on the maps.
Okay, perfect. Another item that I have is.
Back up a second to your first point.
I was thinking it was in chapter ten.
Yep, chapter ten, and I wanted to say it was like fifteen.
No, it's, it's down. You have to scroll down. That's specific that, again, down more. Asked updated data for acreages that way. Yes, yes.
That's Javier's name.
Yes.
So, okay, so you sent me the updated numbers. Okay, great.
The commission, feel free to review it. If there's any feedback or any changes you would like to be done, let us know.
So you essentially just took this and updated the numbers for us?
I did not work on the format. I just sent you the data. So that way you can enter it in the paragraph or in a chart, whatever format New Windsor wants to go move forward with. But we provided you the updated data.
I know you sent it earlier, but this is just a note for me to go back and catch.
And it's in a straightforward Excel format. So it'll be easy to copy and paste numbers or.
Yeah. Put it into this. Okay, and, and we'll address that when we roll down in this session.
Another item, I have several, but another item that I have, last meeting, we were requested if we could designate a number to the maps that we previously provided, I will need your help to let me know which map do you want to be map number one, map number two, map number three. Because this is a quick fix. If you let me know, I can send a request today. We can have it ready by Wednesday.
Yeah, I don't know how it got lost because we had, we've gotten at least two versions with the map numbers on there. But okay, we're just, when we get to doing the comprehensive plan, that's the first thing I have on there is to talk about the maps. Because there's something missing, you've added something, the wording is different on some of them. So I figured we'll talk about it as a group.
Okay.
And that, that way you'll be able to walk out of here with, and I'll go through one by one by one. And I'm, I'm not sure if everybody else went through it or not, but I'll be able to help. I'd say it's like eighty-five percent of what we had had before and that fifty percent, by fifteen minutes, we'll be able to back that up.
Perfect. Just let us know and we'll modify the maps. Another item related to the maps and to the D L U is we've noticed that for designated land use, the categories are the same as zoning. Is that how you're going to be moving forward? Because I, I've been reviewing the comp plan and I've tried finding the definitions for the D L U or the land uses. Are you going with the same definitions as zoning?
So you're talking about the first chart, the land use designation chart?
Yes. I, I've searched for the definitions to verify exactly what, 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 what is going to be for each category of land use. Because I'm seeing here, pretty much you're using the same categories or definitions as zoning. Am I correct?
No.
No?
And that's like ten thousand.
If I check on the zoning, zoning code online and I couldn't find D L U definitions.
Yeah, we definitely have.
We have, but they're not specifically referred to as D, as designated land use. In the, the code doesn't use the phrase designated land use.
Okay.
I don't think.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think. But I don't remember that we had separate land use designations other than what's in the, the ten or twelve or however many districts we have.
I, I was able to locate the zoning one, R one, R two, R three, R five, R ten.
But that's pretty much about it. Business building center.
Yeah, I don't think we have any others.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that in the zoning though, we also reference with the county, this, this R ten thousand or twenty thousand.
If we use those, but if we don't have, maybe if we're looking at areas outside the county or outside the town rather.
Yes.
All right, then I understand you. Because like we don't have any R twenty in town. But we do have R twenty in the growth area, which I guess would, the designated land uses would be in that. So I don't know. I don't think we have others in the zoning code.
I, I don't think there is either, but we.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Designations we have in the G A B.
Yeah.
But what's in the New Windsor town, we have the zoning.
So you need to include in your, make sure I understand. I haven't been here in a while.
For example, the, right now, for example, the.
Which property?
The Hoff properties.
Hoff property. Right now it doesn't have a designated land use. So for an example, I would, I would like to know if whatever, so if, if the land use you, right, because right now, for example, it's under agriculture.
Yeah, but we don't, we haven't, we haven't put anything on them yet.
Correct.
So when the time comes to determine zoning, what definition will you use or what criteria will be used to determine the zoning for this specific property or any other property moving forward? Because again, I couldn't locate any definitions for land use, only zoning.
I don't know that we have separate quote land use definitions. I do know that the Hoff property, while this body has recommended its inclusion in the growth area boundary, I don't think we're anywhere near putting a land use designation or a zoning designation on it. We haven't even gotten to the place where there's an annexation petition.
Right.
So what they might want and what we might want might not match.
That's right. That's exactly right.
So I don't know how to answer your question as far as Hoff is concerned.
Well, it's like in general, if there were any definitions, but I imagine when the moment comes to, for the Windsor to determine how to move forward, for example, for this property or any others, just let her know because again, from our side, we need to update everything. Moving forward, if we provide any data, that will create changes in data. So just, any, any updates, just let me know about.
To get you that information too.
So our, we have in our definitions in this document, the same verbiage like R one single family residential, R one residential district. And then that tells you that we have a learning, eleven zoning designations and that we pulled them out of the town code, chapter two fifteen. So it kind of points over there to tell you the code, the land designations kind of match with the zoning titles.
But where are you looking? Did we specifically mention those areas that are in the G A B, not in, in the town? I don't think we made that separate designation. And that's, that's where this chart actually comes in, but I don't recall. So we've got the town and then the G A B. The town fits those category right. But there are those areas like the Hoff, like, uh, uh, G Hevers.
Mystery Ten acres.
Yeah, the Mystery Ten Acres.
Called general commercial. It's District eleven.
If we ever have a place to land general commercial, we'll know what it says. Built before we know what's in it.
Yes. Well, that's interesting you say that because there's really only ten. That's our zone. My mistake.
We have a zoning designation for general commercial or whatever we call it.
Yes.
It just has not currently been.
Right.
Brought down on any portion, any, on a parcel or parcels.
Yes.
In the town. You see, the thing is about our master plan would have to use the county designation on properties even if they are in our growth area boundary. Because they are still in the county, county's statutory control. So it's almost like, like a Venn diagram where that middle part has nothing but question marks.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It does.
Another item that I have is I've been reviewing the, the comp plan that, the draft that Mark sent after the Maryland annotated code. I have some comments that I would like to share with you. Is it possible? Some observations?
Well, the short answer is yes, but you know, we're like eighty percent through. So is it cosmetic? Is it something substantial?
For an example, in the transportation element, at the intersection of Springdale Avenue and thirty-one, there is mention of a possible road study, but it does not mention that the twenty twenty-three transportation plan already has a project identified for that specific intersection.
Your plan?
Yes.
Not our plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, our, their Carroll County, a transportation plan.
What, what I, first off, yes, we absolutely want to get your input and Claire's input. But what I, what I think I'd rather do.
Yes, sir.
Is let us finish from where we are here going forward, pitch in what you see from what we're doing. And then let's come back and catch up where yours is. Because I would like to think that your comments and Claire's comments would be minimal, but I, I thought really.
It's all other minimal. It's mostly minimal for the housing element, for an example. I noticed that there are other programs that help with housing affordability and they're not mentioned. Just for your consider, again, it just for your consideration and I can forward you that information about these programs.
Well, well, what's the, what's the commission's pleasure? We, we could not pick up from where we left off and get Javier's input for the prior part and work from there. Or we can just continue rolling forward and then come back and get it. I, I don't want to just speak for the group.
We're open to any, any way you want to move forward because yes, we're, we're going to help like in reviewing or any observations. It's whatever's easiest for you because also was, I, I was also going to ask if you have like a timeline of when are you expecting like to have stuff ready or, or a submission?
Our timeline was about two and a half years ago.
I know you've mentioned that.
And, and I said this when we were up there with the commissioners and then not Claire, whoever. Daphne.
Yeah.
That be gentle with us because we've had somebody from Carroll County with us for four years as we've gone through this. And I don't want to have to go through another rewrite because there's anything that's not there. But certainly want to get some input to kind of get this pushed forward and learn from this for the next time we go through and do this.
Want to make sure that we provide as much support as possible, fitting your specific needs. Now that the communication is ongoing, Daphne's also going to be helping me review the draft that you sent. So, so we just want to make sure that we provide as much support as possible. Perfect.
And, and my, my same caution will be.
Yes, sir.
We've had, the Carroll County Planning Department has had that opportunity for four years. So we don't want to go in a whole different direction.
Yeah, definitely.
Because again, we're, we're not planners, so we're just, you know, we're doing the best we could. Okay. So what's the pleasure? We want to just let, let Javier go because he's on a roll? And we go and look or come back to Javier's comments?
Either that or if we finish out, because he might, as we finish, you might find, pick up more items that might need some input or correction or. I'm open to whatever works. Things saved and. I mean, that's kind of my opinion. I don't know if that's, but that's just.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a member, but that never stops me. I would find it, and it may be more than you feel like agreeing to do, but I would find it easier to review if you could, even just bullets, like the transportation issue. Those things are easy to fix, but right now they don't match. Things like that that we could have in writing and then we would be prepared for when you come in and you start talking and everybody's writing stuff down, trying to know what you're doing and keep up. I think that kind of large or end of the day review would be better if we had an idea of what we were going to be talking about before we talked about it.
Perfect. So what I can.
Add one to that. I would like it not only there in writing, but where you're seeing it here. So that we could kind of focus in that area as opposed to, okay, now we got your notes. Now we all have to collectively try to figure out where it is. Because obviously you're, you're looking through this now.
Yes, we're, we're reviewing it as per the Maryland annotated code because there are specific required elements the comp plan needs to have. And I have an Excel sheet, but what I'll do is, I think that's a great suggestion. I can get all the bullet points because I, there's still a whole bunch left for, for, for us to review. But I can definitely do that. Get all those bullet points, email them and then for the, for the next meeting, you already have them with you and work on that. If that seems.
Walk us through.
Oh, yes, yes, definitely. Yes.
Walk down this and.
Yes.
And not have to go through adding another six, eight months.
Definitely, okay.
You don't know how expensive she is. This is your retirement.
And so far, those are the items that I have. I don't, I don't have any other items.
Is that it?
That's all.
Sorry, we were doing sidebars. By the way, when you want to go to skateboard park?
Oh, hush.
We have lights now.
Just stop with the skateboarding.
All righty. Well, thank you Javier. That's good. I, I am certainly excited to have somebody looking at this. I, I wish we had it sooner and I'm really again hoping and, and we're, we're going to make, be forced to make some decisions like I, we're not going to rebuild that. But okay, and we'll just make a market move from there. But hopefully we can come to a negotiated settlement like Ukraine and Russia.
And again, any, any areas that you think that we can provide further support, just let us know. We're here to help out as much as possible.
Well, with that comment, where's the agenda before I jump, I think? Oh, yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, and I'm not sure if you had read this Drew, but Gary sent me something today. Carroll County, remember the water resource element? We had that presentation first and then we had the Springdale individuals, the architects talk with us. Well, that water resource element is now for the, from the county being submitted through the public comment period. And there'll be a hearing held on February fourth. Now apparently the state regulation is that each planning commission has to have a public hearing. So what Carroll County is offering to us, what the Carroll County Planning Department is offering is that we could be part of the group public hearing on February fourth. But if we did that, we would need to have a quorum in attendance that night. Otherwise, we have between mid-January to mid-February to have our own public hearing on our portion of that water resource element. Well, yeah, I was going to say that it's a, it's a six o'clock in the evening meeting on Wednesday, February fourth. And what Brenda is saying is that it will be a, this will be first on the agenda. So they'll, they'll put it out to the public for comment and then the public hearing will be on the fourth of Wednesday, the fourth, six o'clock, which is a town council meeting. So Dave will not be able to be in attendance.
They put it first on the agenda and the meeting starts at six. The town council meeting doesn't start till seven. So.
Can you get a little distance? I mean, that's going to be really pushing. They're saying they're not expecting a public hearing. So you don't really know whether something will come up there, but.
This issue may be first on the agenda, but that doesn't necessarily mean that New Windsor is first on the agenda.
Is it going to be held here? At the county office building?
Center Street.
Center Street.
So if we have our own somewhere between that time period, we're going to have to be versed in our portion of it to discuss and with any comments. Well, I'm sure I can get, you know, special. If I, if I set it up later, it would not, you know, I'll talk to them.
You're off the council. So stop trying.
For a quorum, I'm out of the country, so I'm not going to be able to go. Oh, and my spouse will be also, so I'm not sure if that'll make a difference. Probably shouldn't. You'll still be able to have a quorum to start the town council meeting.
Well, you never know in advance if anybody's got other issues. We're sitting here, we don't know.
Yeah.
You'd, you'd need to be conversant on your element irrespective of whether your public hearing is there or here. Assuming that people attend your public hearing, we know how well attended our public hearings tend to be. But if the Hoff property is going to be part of the decision that the county, that the town is going to have to make about water resources, it, it wouldn't surprise me to see some people come out on every side of that potential issue. So you could have, I mean, you could have a bunch of people here or there. I don't know if there's any other water issues in any of the other jurisdictions that could be thorny. You know, who knows?
They made it sound like that's number one issue is they're looking through these comprehensive plans when you might, all of us want to talk.
It's, it's an issue and everybody knows it's an issue everywhere. I don't, I, there's no way of knowing which is better to have a, have a mass hearing or a more localized one. But you can't do it on the floor. That's problematic.
A mass hearing could. A mass hearing could last for hours with, you know.
What? This is just a comment coming from the, the, uh, from, uh, Brenda. Is that, uh, th- this will be first on the agenda. They're not anticipating, um, that there's going to be much of a, uh. Reaction and they're only scheduling half an hour.
Oh, wow.
For the whole.
We don't anticipate a huge turnout. Of course, we never really know how many will turn out. And unless we have a big turnout, we don't expect this to go beyond half an hour. They were going to.
It's five minutes per jurisdiction. Does not expect a lot of controversy.
Just add that they are, they said they had hoped to have a hybrid option so we wouldn't have to be physically present. That, that's not an option that they are able to do. And, uh, then of course they said that if, if, if your planning commission is not able to have a quorum present. Then, then, then you're welcome to schedule and hold your own public hearing between January fifteenth and February fifteenth. Need to make a quote, let's put it this way. It said they need us to give them a decision by December thirty-one on whether we're going to be part of theirs or not.
When you get time to look at everybody's calendars, you know that Kim's going to be gone. And someone else might be gone. Uh, we don't know because we haven't talked about it at all. You could ask about that in planning commission updates at the next council meeting.
Can do.
I don't know how else to decide.
But that, that's only addressing one person. How about?
About everybody else. Is it, could we get a quorum there?
About you, Kevin?
Give me the check.
He said, yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Right now, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Scheduled. I mean, you know, I don't have my, fine, but right now I, I'm pretty sure I don't have anything.
I'm, far as I know, I'm open.
It's the same place where we met last time. And, uh, we, we, we went up together. So I would say, you know, us, we could do the same thing. You might need to just go by yourself so you can blitz out of there and run backwards. Glenn, do you think you could make it?
I don't see why I couldn't, but you never know what's going to pop up, but I would say yes at the moment.
So, I mean, we, we, it sounds like we would have four. Oh, I'm sorry Rebecca. I'd like to look at the value. Would you be able to make it Rebecca?
I'm sure.
Sure you could. Okay. So it, it sounds like we're, we would have it covered.
Center Street is that?
Some people know it's court, but it's Center Street. Yeah.
I will bring it up at the December third, is that right? Town council meeting and propose that we join the county's mass meeting. But I will be running late and see if there's an impact in the February town council meeting and if they can work around that.
I think that makes the most sense. That way everybody knows what's coming up.
And there'll be a lot more people knowledgeable about the W R E there as opposed to us trying to get boned up on it here. Okay. Well, thank you. So that was one of the items. Dave, could you, that packed up big pile right there.
Yeah, I think that rubber band off.
What Dave, Dave H is going to pass around. These are a new set of plans from Springdale. Piece of paper that came with it has a section that says these items are transmitted for the.
I've got mine.
For approval by review use, approval was submitted, review and comment records as requested. They didn't check any of them. So, so. Yeah, it's a basic roundtable. So they didn't check off what they want us to do or anything, but, um. I heard from town manager and said that, um, I'm not putting it on the agenda for us to have a discussion about this. Because, uh, it was pretty clear back in July what was expected from Springdale. And then revising their plans, I, I frankly, I don't really care what it looks like right now. Because we explained as best we could about the water and the sewage issues. Uh, we talked about the, the, the water runoff, uh, and so we not really had a number of students. I mean, there's, there's a lot of information that we would need and the first step to reach the contact with the town manager. To start the dialogue about what's needed. And it's not just paper, but it's helping understand how, uh, the recent infrastructure limitations that we have right now. And they're significant. The timing was very interesting with the W R E because it is a county company and they're talking about our water situation and our waste treatment situation. Where we're kind of just keeping our head above water right now with the existing infrastructure for current. So the idea of storm and having to work in front of it. Despite not talking about, uh, the abilities initially to solve that. Uh, sorry, the county and the, uh, the, the state are going to need to be involved. So we're a long way from reviewing plans to, to go forward. So you have the set, uh, but they gave no instructions on what they were expecting. I have no. Uh, and as of three o'clock today, Gary, town manager, had not heard anything from them. Uh, what they want us to do with this or what's next, but there have been no discussions. So, um, this is for your review, however you would like. Uh, I know you just eat this stuff up Glenn. I know you just couldn't wait to look at it, but.
No, I'm just like looking at it a little bit. From what they, from what I remember, what they submitted the last time. This is like a full set of like final plans. It's got proposed grading. It's got all the stormwater. It's got.
What it doesn't have is proposed funding. For any of the vast improvements.
But they've, they've gone through an extensive redesign, redesign here. So it's like.
But they haven't done the basics and what the steps are. So, you know, you, nice to get on a train, spend the money, but if you're going to the wrong station.
What they need to provide us is a sequence of construction of how they like note for note, step by step of how they want to. Or what their intention is, not just a plan, it's a final plan that shows the final product, but.
Kind of wishless right now as far as I'm concerned, but there are two serious issues, what, three roads? Their infrastructure is an issue that needs to be discussed and not just here, what you're going to do. And, uh, we, we, we can't begin to. Been six months since they were here before. Great. So they, they given us additional plans, but that's, we aren't any further along than we were before. So. Anyway, that's some more paper for you.
Just, just to be transparent, um, last week. Mayor Cornick, town manager Di, um, the county, Joe Vigliotti, the county commissioner and Cr- Chris.
Hi.
Chris Hines. Um, at least, oh, Roberta Wyndham was there and I don't know who else. Met with Springdale, Borman, Dr. Borman was there and I don't know who else. Maybe their, maybe their architect or the engineer. I'm not sure which one was there. Mayor Cornick just gave me a brief dump on it. Um, they did have a, a meeting. I'm not sure who. If, if Springdale set it up, I don't know the, the logistics of it. However, they did, Mayor Cornick said have a good meeting. It was a, a respectful meeting. There was, these are the kind of things you need to do to get the things rolling. Borman, uh, Dr. Borman was, um, amenable to those things, i- it sounded like. And, um, Mayor Cornick thought that it was a good start. So we'll see where it goes. I, I, that's pretty much all I know. We'll see where it goes. I don't know what, how these plans fit into that meeting or what they thought, or even if these were there. I have no idea. But, um, at least there, they were in the same room with the town and the county. So maybe it's a, a start to move forward with some stuff. That's, that's all. Gary was there.
It was just Friday though, wasn't it?
Was it just for, it, it could, yeah, maybe, maybe the mayor called me Friday night. So it might have been just.
Last council meeting, the fact that it was coming up. It was Gary and I did.
Yes. So I don't know, um.
I haven't talked to him since, so I don't know.
I don't know that they talked any specifics at all about water sewage. I think maybe talked about some process stuff. If you want to get this thing going, there's a lot of process. To, to move forward before you just come and slap down and say, can I go? So that's, I, I just level setting. That's all I know.
At four o'clock today, I got an email. Response to mine saying, I said that if I hear anything, I will let the mayor and town manager know. And I got a response back and likewise I'll do the same thing. So nobody said anything about that meeting.
Okay.
Cool. Well, thank you, Dave. That, that, yes, for, I'm, I'm glad that you pointed that out. So that's, that is some movement. But it's still not sufficient for us to do something with this, but it's.
No.
Maybe some action items coming from, as a result of that meeting that just haven't been finalized yet. That happens. I mean, yeah, especially this time of year. It's, it's hard to get five people in the room at the same time between now and March.
Yeah, well, actually this first started this, this time last year.
Yeah.
That they want to talk and then it was in, uh, November, oh, sorry, December meeting, which we have a special meeting around the holidays. So we could, could get them in. Cause actually we had Wayne and, uh, Gary come and talk with us about the water. Okay. Well. It's always nice to get the rest of the story. Well, something else from the town manager.
Oh, my goodness.
Two fifty-two. This is a, a blast from the past. September twenty-four, twenty eighteen, the highbrow subdivision. I didn't remember that was the name, but yeah, okay.
That's the ones over here. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a property.
Can't remember the name of the street.
Off Lambert, behind Bubba's, uh, the alley.
Oh, behind ours.
Yeah, behind you. Yeah, that's right.
They wanted four lots in that little green spot.
They wanted four, well, now it's down to three.
A little more sensible.
And they're not going to have that goofy little zig in there. And, uh, and, and so they reached out to Gary and they met with him. And, uh, or they sent him the new plans and he wanted to know whether we wanted to meet with them or not. And I took delivery. Uh, it's no longer highbrow. It's now called Lambert's Edition Subdivision.
Better than lowbrow.
Yeah. So, um, I wanted to know whether we wanted to, to, to see the plans and, and meet with them. And I said yes. Because we have new members that weren't here. I don't know. Were you part of, were you here when that came up?
Um, what year? Eighteen?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think so. I would, I came in on seventeen.
Really? That long?
Yep. Yeah.
Well, it sounds like it's substantially changed from four to three, so we should see it.
It, it hasn't changed. The rules and regulations that are applicable, the counts, the blah, blah, blahs probably have some, yeah, they're, they're starting over.
So I, but I did take delivery and say to Gary, yeah, put it in your response that the planning commission wants to meet with them. But they don't need to go through anything elaborate, but just come in and let us know, you know, what it is, what's changed.
They gotta do, they gotta do a subdivision review.
Yeah, well, it's.
Well, so however elaborate that winds up being.
I think last time they had like a rough, like site plan or how the layout of the home.
They did.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did. And it was really.
Pretty simple subdivision, but.
Well, no, they had the complication of.
Well, they had that weird little road thing. Yeah.
I think it's a different owner now.
Yeah, it, it has been sold.
Yeah. Yep.
He sold it. I don't know. My mom can't sing too.
It's a coming attraction.
It's a busy day.
He has said, but I forget.
This was sitting here this morning when I came in and, uh, this is the Carroll County twenty twenty-four annual plan. And, um, if you recall back in, well, this is kind of part of us having gone up to, no, was it? Yeah. We had to go up and meet with, uh, the, uh, planning commission, the Carroll County Planning Commission. And then talk with them about what we're doing with our comprehensive plan. And there was ultimately a letter that I sent them. And it's, it's kind of a rubber stamp on the annual plan. But it was followed up with the, the formality. So our letter's in here and if anybody would like to see the Carroll County annual plan. Um, and I, I only have this one hard copy, but I, I will also send out the link as to, uh, as a reminder of where to find on the.
That's the report, right?
Yeah, this is the report. Yep. So. That's the housekeeping. I got nothing else new. Did anybody else take a look at the maps that we had versus what Javier gave us? I found that the maps that you gave last time, uh, um, were in roughly the same order. So, uh, but the names changed on about half of them. So that will be something that we, and I, um. Did you, did you look and compare the two?
I did not do a, are, are you, be- between, when you say I have September version, I got October version. And then I have some older ones and.
That I had kind of been, I kept going back to Javier saying that we need to get updated for the hall property. Uh, was the, um, ones that we got from Abigail.
Okay, that's easy.
To fit in, but, um, I did find another set and I don't know who gave them to us. It's always nice when there's a name on there and I, and I would encourage also that when you do this, put your name. Because that, that got a date on here. But it helps because when you have different versions and you also know where to go back to. Uh, she didn't, I, she didn't put her name. She just said prepared by Carroll County Planning Department AR. And eight twenty-two.
Right.
Abigail Rogers.
Abigail, right.
But, um, and I, I think, yeah, I, I don't really have any complaints about, I mean, the coloring's evident, the coloring's different. Uh, word usage is a little bit different in some of them. Uh, I thought there were some nice enhancements, but. If you don't mind, I'll just run through what I saw on, on each of these. Number one is the land use designation map.
Okay, let me look. Okay.
And it was called on the last map, New Windsor Town and Growth Area Land Uses. Now they're calling it New Windsor Land Use Designation. Is there, are you, can you tell us why we might change that? Uh, I'm not locked into either one, but.
The person that created the maps, um, went with that name, but if you would like to, to change the name of the maps. We're open to any, any suggestions, any requirements?
Given to us by Abigail. From Carroll County Planning was New Windsor Town and Growth Area Land Uses. This one says New Windsor Land Use Designation.
We didn't change it.
We didn't change it. You guys did.
So what I can do is I can confirm the logic behind it, but again, um, we can go with whatever name or, or. Title you want to go with.
Those land use that, you know, you're comparing it to the Maryland. Any of those? Impa- no impact. Cool.
I do know. Now I don't know who it was that told me. I want to say it was Daphne. Somebody told me that these were, it might have been you because you both look alike. No, no.
Curly hair.
Yeah, no, that, um, the, 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 there was some cleanup for consistency.
Yes.
On these and the coloring and stuff and that's all fine. But for us, the constant is that. But for us, the constant is that Carroll County Planning. So the name change, Carroll County Planning. And we'd just like some help as to, you know, why.
Could be, could be a template that they're using for all of them that they're doing. And Manchester has one that says Manchester Land Use Designations. You know, they're, they're working off a format.
I, I, if, if we like the names of the maps that Abigail gave us. I'll be happy to give this set to Javier, so he can.
I think some of them we might wanna discuss, that's why I thought.
That's fine, but I'll, I'll kind of pull out the ones that were, and I'll provide him with these, at least so he will have the title that we want.
I like simpler better, frankly. And, and, and the one, the big one, we can call them, the little one will be Abigail's, and the big one is what we got from Javier. How's that? That way we can tell them apart. The little one is New Windsor Town and Growth Area Land Uses. Which is kind of a mouthful. And I, you know, what Javier gave us, the big one is New Windsor Land Use Designation. And I know we use that term a lot more lately. Land use, so I, I, I don't have a problem with changing the jargon, but that's definitely map one.
So when I'm looking at the other maps, not, not to get ahead or anything, they all say New Windsor something.
Yep.
Okay, so it doesn't say New Windsor Town something, it just says New Windsor. So why isn't this first one just New Windsor Growth Area Land Uses?
Well, it's not, it's just, yeah. Not just, it's, it's, oh, yeah, there's Town and Growth, okay.
We need it, we need the town in that one.
What's the difference? Well, I guess the G A B, there's the town and then it's G A B. If we just have New Windsor Land Use Designation. That includes G A B, includes the town. And I agree with you, take out. But. Other thoughts? Way to go with this land use designation, New Windsor Land Use Designation.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Map number one.
Stays is map number one. I mean, it'll be, get the map number one, and Dave will turn over to you at least one of the maps, so you can see how it was before.
So it's gonna be New Windsor Land Use Designations.
Yes, and that would be map one.
And it's map one. See, hers had a nice little map one over in the corner.
I am going to. These are Abigail's names of the maps.
She has on map one, she has Employment Campus Overlay, but it's.
Yeah, I don't see.
I don't know what that's.
I don't know what that is either. It's not on there anywhere.
No.
And, and, and they really don't have it on the other one, so. Just, again, it's Michelle, so as Stuteley said, it's his template.
Have listed up.
So I don't know where that comes from.
Yeah. So I, so it looks like map one.
No, I think that's one second.
Of course you might, second's up. So then map two. Publicly owned land. That's pretty consistent.
Should just be easy to understand what they are.
Yep. Driving me crazy, the coloring all changed on these, it really hurts my head, but it's. So number two is the next one you had, the publicly owned land. Number three. New Windsor Preservation and Land Trust Easements, which is one horrible looking chart. It always has. But it's, that's number three. That stayed the same. Again, what I have up there on the screen, for what it's worth, is that's the small. Little larger. Number four. We have. The G A B and New Windsor Zoning. This just is New Windsor Zoning Designations. I'm wanting, does that make a difference if we point out G A B in this case? Cause what just jumps out is Mr. Hoff Property. That's really what most jumps out. Before, we didn't have it in the G A B. And we have it right now as agricultural, cause that's what it is in the county.
But it still is within the lines.
Yes, it's still within our G A B, yeah. But it's not within the town line. So we have a discussion of annexation. So. I guess for consistency, since number one is not saying New Windsor G A B and Town Land Use. That probably map four, we just stayed with New Windsor Zoning Designations also. That's consistent.
I have, so it stays as, as same as one.
Yeah, same as one, well, yeah, right, instead of land use, it's zoning. So you're good with number four. Or the, the New Windsor Zoning Designation is number four.
So we're just leaving to the title with the very.
Yep, yep, just adding the number, yep. Oh, yeah, thank you, I'm glad you did that, cause there were a couple. That, on number four, Javier.
Yes, sir.
New Windsor, in the middle, New Windsor Zoning. Correct the spelling of Windsor. Winduzor. The summary of what you have for, I'll go back and change that, yep, absolutely. So number five. New Windsor Priority Funding Area, that's. That's number five, and that's the same as what we had at four. You have added a term that we didn't have before called Parcels. Which is kind of like, what, discussion or? It's not, doesn't have one of the other designations, and we have done a couple of the maps. That's a, a new addition that was put in on these maps, Parcels.
That was. One, uh, what was it, the lady that was here? Didn't she say that, like referred to where our water coronation and. Reservoir on top, there's squares.
Yeah, they're not on this map. Parcels on this map, it's Priority Funding Area. Are items that are in the G A B. But not in the town. And we don't have a. A designation of Priority Funding Area. I'm okay with leaving that as it is.
And parcel just has a.
Yep.
Has a legal meaning.
Uh-oh.
No, no, it's not bad.
Okay.
Just. It's an identified and, and described and recorded piece of land. Right now, like the Hoff Property doesn't have any designations on it, insofar as we are concerned.
Yes. Number six.
So about number five, New Windsor Priority Funding Area stays.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. I thought it, I didn't say it. Thought it, therefore I said it.
Or more accurately, if you're wise, you didn't say it.
See, that's the female interpretation. Okay, now this one's interesting. I, you have a New Windsor Future Annexation Areas. That sounds too definitive to me. We had New Windsor Municipal Growth Area. That's like, and, and even then, I, I. I have New Windsor Potential Future Growth Area. I feel like annexation is saying we've already made a decision. And that's not necessarily the case. That's just my response. Does anybody have an opinion on that?
What, what, what was, I'm sorry, excuse me, what was your definition, your title?
New Windsor Potential Future Growth Areas.
Potential.
Potential Growth Areas. No, it's the.
Do we need future with you though, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, don't need future, I agree.
Future annexed. That sounds like it's already done, I agree with you, I think it needs to say.
Windsor. Potential future area, uh, no, I'm sorry, New Windsor. Potential Growth Areas, yes, yes.
Map number six.
Which you have as New Windsor Future Annexation Areas.
Potential annexation.
Growth Areas. Personally, I think if we got rid of the green shading altogether. Because that's, again, it's got Future Annexation Areas. If we're talking about potential, or, potential growth areas, and we've already got those outlined in red. I would just get rid of that, that category, Future Annexation Area. Okay, we'll do it. Cause it's duplicate. Removes that somewhat misleading. Oh, good point, yeah. Where in the bottom of the key. We got Growth Area, have a Potential Growth Area. Just add the word Potential. Where you got the little, this is on map six. Down at the bottom, just totally strike Future Annexation Areas, just get rid of that category. Okay, and of course, that means on the map, get rid of all the, the green.
Yes, sir, have it here.
On the, the legend, the key at the bottom, where you have the red border and it says Growth Area. Add the word Potential Growth Area.
Okay.
And we'll be all buddies. I like that number, the next one is New Windsor Parks and Trails. I like that you added and trails. That's, and we did have the trails on the Abigail. But I like that we added it to the title. And that would be number seven.
Okay.
I don't know about everybody else, but I, while it's nice to hold in your hand the smaller eight and a half by eleven. These eleven by fourteen's are much better on the eyes to look at. I know that it, larger paper, it's an ink printer, a colored ink, but this is why we wanna get them this size. So that's number seven, New Windsor Parks and Trails. Number eight.
It doesn't show her walking trails.
Sorry, what was that?
Back on the. Map number seven, Parks and Trails, it doesn't show the Atlee Ridge. That's not. Walking Trail's not in there.
Oh, okay.
And also the, the walking trail from Sneider Summit. That ties in and comes up on Hillside Drive is, I don't see. I don't see that.
Both of those are two new developments since we did this fifteen years ago.
So it's not showing that Atlee Walking Trail, which is the one, the subdivision? Which is the other one? There, see, we're at Townview Circle. They, they have a walking trail that, that cuts along and, and ties in at Hillside Drive. What's the name of that trail again? I, I guess it would be just, we'll call it Sneider Summit. But it'd be, I mean, as small as the map is, I don't know how you would.
I don't, yeah, I'm trying to.
How you would. Walking Trail for Atlee Ridge, it comes, it starts there at the, the pumping stations. You don't, there's no walking trails. And the, it just has bike trails. That's worth putting in there, or?
I think it would be good to have in there. Just have different colored lines. Could you? Draw that one there? Give that up to Javier?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
I have a green pen. That's a different color.
It was her. That's a trail map.
I don't think we had that one.
Okay, now it has it here on this. It has it on here. But it has it like. It doesn't cross over, doesn't cross over rare tracks, but it, you know, they have it on here, but they don't have the one that comes in. Off of this. But the map that Abigail, map number eight that Abigail gave us, has Atlee Ridge, but it doesn't have the. See, kinda like.
Well, that's, the, the map number eight that she gave us.
Down around here.
That, that line is the town limit.
Well, we're hillside. Remember, hillside just goes down.
Yeah, this little bit is like hillside here, down to the pumping station.
Yes.
But it just doesn't have.
Yeah.
Connecting there. But it, I know Atlee, yeah, it's not here. Yeah, now see, now she, it has it here, but it doesn't go, it doesn't cross the tracks, it stops. And, and the one that comes down along. It's so small to see, it kinda comes along. Here and then it ties in here to Hillside Drive, it's, it's just a short. Cause see, she has it more or less like going Lampa Avenue. Whether she got this information from the county or. You want this, I don't know where.
Is this the?
If you want it, I could. See, I don't know where's, but that was, is somewhere in the county.
The other side of the tracks.
Yeah, that was. This was back in twenty-two, so.
Well, twenty-two.
I don't know whether.
Okay. Okay. Hey Drew? Would that one be the, uh? Is that the golf?
Yeah, that would be the disco.
Would this be the skateboard?
Uh, no, that's, um, they're off of, um, early.
So the, oh, that's right, there's a skateboard's over here.
Meadow Lane there, you see the.
I guess that would be considered, either the ball fields or skate park.
Anybody feel need to point those out, skateboard, park in the, uh, Frisbee Golf?
I, I mean, it, it would fit into this map. You know, it's, it's, there's a big open space there behind Atlee Ridge houses there that we could.
We could change a lot of other lines just to write in skateboard.
Oh, no, I mean, I'd just have like a little S K there, like we have other ones we come along here.
The Sables Ballfields. And it's, and I guess maybe. There wasn't room to put it over close, closer to the old road.
I was, I was just kind of thinking as we come along here a little bit later, things, something really pop out, like when we get to the, uh, water and the, uh.
This map, it's in the same location too.
We could, we could drive ourselves crazy trying to fill these in.
I'm assuming that picnic table park sign there is supposed to be the ball fields and the skate park area.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we wanted to give it any kind of designation, that's all.
Picnic table, sort of the universal park sign.
Right.
If you look at camp maps and park maps.
I think, when I want to go skate.
I think Abigail, this one map, doesn't account, didn't count, it had like a master plan for, uh, like.
Trying to bring film.
Uh, greenways and walking. Pedestrian. Yeah, I, because it shows, cause this map, when I look at it, it shows going out along the rideaway of the rarer tracks. And we were all saying, well, that probably won't. Yeah. So maybe that's where that information come from.
No, Josh do not run in our family. Bowling shirt from when he was about four. He was a bowler. He only has a bat, well, he has more than, but just the little one. He's gotten rid of most of them.
So seven, New Windsor parks and trails.
That's map number seven.
Good. Number eight says New Windsor facilities. Or both. And what's on there? I'm wondering if we might want to give that a different name. And, and, and before we make a decision on that, I would just add, the next two are water service areas and facilities. And, uh, then after that, sewer service areas and facilities. So. We could say related facilities for the water and related facilities for the, the waste. This one, I'm, I'm not sure what to call it, but we just call it facilities. And what's on here is now the fire company and the library.
Government or quasi-governmental facilities, that's a big long title.
Public facilities?
Well, they're on, they're not, cause I mean, I don't think anybody can just wander in and roam around those buildings, so they're not public in that sense.
Michelle, how would, excuse me. They have listed on here, it's fire company, but we're a separate corporate.
Exactly what we're just talking about. It, cause New Windsor facilities gives the impression that New Windsor owns these facilities. And we don't own the library and we don't own you, own you folks.
About infrastructure, this map, instead of facilities. To me, it looks like it's infrastructure.
I think we use that word for water and sewer too.
Storage tank, existing pump, and that's all.
Significant New Windsor facilities? Particular? New Windsor service facilities? New Windsor service facilities, New Windsor water facilities, New Windsor. What's that called, waste? No, sewer service facilities.
Sewer services.
How's that grab you? This one, New Windsor service facilities? Then the next one would be New Windsor water service. Facilities. And then the next one after that, New Windsor sewer service facilities. I hear any objections? Sold.
Will be New Windsor service facilities?
Yep.
Okay.
Number nine will be water service facility. Number ten would be sewer service facilities. Now, I don't know. Really what difference this is you guys, yous guys, but. We have a change, starting with the water service. And this was one would, might be helpful, does this, so that will be number nine, the water service facility. You have on yours, priority, future, long range, future. What we had before that was, the existing is W one, priority W three. Future W five. I don't, oh, we even just addressed what those numbers mean. Long range, so. So you've got the same categories, you've gotten rid of the W designation. You being the generic Carolina planning. Does that mean anything to you? W one, W three, W five?
Well, it's, when it's W one, it's existing, W two, it's priority.
But now on the one, the large one, you presented, has zero to six year, seven to ten year. That's different than W one, W three. To me, I, the, the, the zero to six means more than W one.
I always thought they worked up, I always thought the whole system was like W six, uh, zero to six and seven to ten and then unplanned or whatever the heck was left. There would be dragons or something.
And then on that, wouldn't we remove the Sneider parcel? Cause see, that's showing, still listed as long range. Is that Sneider out there? There along Lampa and below Town View? I don't think so. Oh, I'm looking to see. The striped blue.
Oh, I'm in the wrong spot. Yeah.
See where the pumping station and then the, uh, water treatment facility.
Both of these? Yeah, that's not right. That should be existing, right?
Uh, that's a, well, it says long range.
Yeah, it's right there on the long range future, but there are two existing, uh.
Yeah, your pumping station and your water treatment. They're still there.
Is it all of it? So that little, looks like a letter A under Union.
That's, that's Union Square.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah, but I was talking about down here, below Town View. You know, it's talking about the stripe there in here. That was the Sneider, that should be taken out right there.
Oh, you're talking about the new thing with the Sneider, yes. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. We've been talking about the Hoff property, which is now. You've got in the growth area boundary. No, 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 Drew, that's out. That's out of our G A B, it's been taken out.
So Sneider?
No, the, uh. Yeah, the Sneider, cause it's not within the red.
Uh, oh, okay.
No, I think we're good.
But that would still, you still want to keep that in the?
So I, so you're thinking we shouldn't have it in there at all because it's not in the G A B?
Well, has it been taken out or did they ask to have it taken out?
No, we, we agreed to do it.
But it's to be included in this plan as gone, if that's a horrible sentence.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So that stripe, it should just all be gone, is what you're saying?
I mean, that's in my thinking.
Yes, I agree with you, I think, I think you're right.
For agricultural.
Yeah, he wants to be in the news, man.
How does that affect, um, it's a possibility that they may be drilling wells down there or something? For future water? So how would you just eliminate it? Or if it turns into a park or a trail or whatever?
Would that be after it was done?
That's, that's an eleven acre parcel that if everything goes. Then that would have to be, that would be then given, that's not now. Right now, it'd be coming out and then they would.
But if something happens, it would just be added back in?
I guess we'd have to add it back in, right?
Not necessarily.
Does it have to be added back in?
It depends on what it comes in as. And if it comes in as a, as just property that the town owns to.
Have a.
All meant part of its system or whatever, a town owns property outside of the town boundaries. And it can continue to do that, and that wouldn't have any effect, I wouldn't think, on its.
Or how about just removing it from the rarer tracks south?
It's still not going to be served, it's just going to be owned.
Well, even that.
And if at some point in the future, we decide to serve it, then we'd have to change things.
That also comes out until there's a decision.
I think.
Yeah, yeah, cause we did remove that. So what were we talking about, Javier, on, let's just look at map nine.
Yes.
Water service area.
Yes, sir.
It's almost smack dab in the middle of the page. You'll see the W T P.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, you'll notice that line, the area, long range, future. All of that with W T P is, that's all outside of our G A B. And that's what we're saying, that's why we're in discussion, that probably should just be, just blank, white.
But, but it still needs to be part of the decision making that the council does. To take it out, just like it's, the Hoff property coming in is going to be part of the decision making. This is a proposal, and we put this plan before the legislative body, it is a proposal. So part of the proposal is to put Hoff in, part of the proposal, unless I'm off on time and I have missed some time. But part of the proposal for Sneider is to take Sneider out.
Yes.
So we can, we can take it out of these draft maps, but it has to be with the understanding that if the council.
Yes.
Comes back and says, Fui, it's going to have to go back in the maps.
That's right.
Okay, make sure I understand.
Yes.
So the council hasn't made any decision?
The council won't make a decision until we give them the document to decide upon.
And what I've already talked about with the mayor. And the town attorney also kind of said this when we first did this. That we'll, we'll do this plan as if those two items happened. But it will be pointed out when this document is turned over to the town council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here are some of the highlights of what's in here.
And that was not in there.
Sure.
Yeah.
So it says though you know that, and then it's up to them whether they want to vote on those individual items or the whole package in general.
Or send it back to you.
Or send it back to us and say, forget it, Javier redo the maps. That's what.
So you, you want me to remove the long range, future designation for that specific property?
Yes, that is just above the tracks up to Lambert and below the tracks. That's all outside of the G A B.
Well, this part is.
Yes, the same thing.
What about this guy up here?
If you look on the other map, it shows.
They're off a slalom?
Uh, that's, that, those still stay.
So I think when we're.
We're already told by taking this one.
I know, I want to make sure Javier understands.
Oh, I know that, I, I was.
Cause I knew we're talking about the areas that are striped and I'm like, there's lots of areas that are.
No, I was just saying, up to Lambert.
I just wanted to make sure we're.
It's outside of the red.
I talked about it, I got it.
Yes, just that. Number ten.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask the market. Okay, number ten, the same thing?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay. So it'll be removed pretty much to Sneider Farm property?
Yep, yep.
Not the Sneider Farm.
No, no, but it's that, that, that's just a Sneider property.
Just the property, okay.
Yes, not Sneider Farm, the stripes on it, just Sneider property.
Okay, perfect.
Cause there's more Sneider property.
Yeah, it's a little bit more.
A tad more.
You do know.
Or as a category, yeah.
I, I know, I know, I know them all.
You know them all, yeah.
I know them all, I know the next generation.
You'd have been proud of me, I was dancing around this, okay. So we're up to number ten. Sewer service facilities. Number. Now it starts to get a little tricky, cause we were giving and taking. Number eleven, I think, the environmental resources, that is okay. Okay, that's, those stays the same, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, that's number eleven.
Yes.
Environmental resources. Now, Abigail never gave us a number twelve. And we did have the mineral resources in the original plan. Started from, from back in twenty-ten. So this looks pretty similar to what we had there before.
How long does that change on any of them?
Yeah. So I'm fine with New Windsor mineral resources being number twelve. Now, this is where it gets tricky. Because. Number thirteen of Abigail's. Was New Windsor historical resources. And I'd say that would just be number thirteen, again.
Is that Abigail's list?
Uh, yes.
Cause she has twelve as historical resources.
It's because of this mineral resources, which is now twelve.
Okay, yeah.
She did not have a number twelve.
Is, okay, is that the end of her page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been saying to Javier for months, you know, we gotta renumber these things because, um, and.
They're not.
Not fair to you, but I think you sit there and say, well, we, we won't do that one, or we don't do that one, or something like that in your early days. But it's now appeared, there's mineral resources, so I think that's fine.
So that's twelve and then this guy will be thirteen.
Yeah, that was fourteen.
And, and then, we had one which you have not given us. Shame on you. There's one that is actually, I regularly look at that, and that's the New Windsor overview. So Abigail had it as number, her number fourteen also. As number, her number fourteen also. And I don't mind giving that view. It'd be nice, I think, to have that one in there.
I have it as number fourteen.
Yep.
Yep. But now, uh, what I have is historical two.
I went and numbered these because I, I am. World where the numbers aren't sequential. But we've been with that a number twelve for well over a year. Actually, it's like three years. So the Mineral Resources is now resurfaced, Javier has found that for us. And that is our twelve. Abby's thirteen still remains as thirteen, the historic. And the mystery number fourteen.
No, I have it as.
I can, I can give that view to those.
You can scan and, and email us at PDF, that'll be good.
No scanner. I don't work anymore. I'll let you have it. It's the holiday season. I could take a picture.
Scan everywhere you are. It's all like me.
Look, I still have dial up service.
You could do this, and I'm like, no, I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Don't clarify, then we don't have anything to talk about. Snyder's property.
This area, it's out, it's outside of the G A B. That's correct, it's all that blue comes out.
Okay, in the same circular.
Yep, and even inside the tracks, that comes out.
Perfect for both, okay.
Yep, all three. Eleven, twelve, teen.
Okay. Heesh, God, I'm. Touched any of the review.
Now we can start reviewing the comprehensive plan.
So Javier, you don't need mine, you got your set.
And what I'll do, so I'll, I'll work on these at the map numbers, make the changes. I'll locate New Windsor Overview map on our records.
And it doesn't have to be an obnoxious number, just, you know, something, some way to designate it, and I think it's a good idea having it there at the bottom by the directional. Do we want to take a half an hour and go into it, or we want to? Well. Oh, wait. So I probably need like five minutes to talk about upcoming events.
Don't forget, we have announcements.
That's right, we got any announcements?
Be announcements.
You have a special announcement? Know whether, you know, things happen. What's, what's the pleasure of the group, you want to? So draw on for half an hour, do some of this, or just?
Yeah.
Twenty-five minutes.
So it's really just.
I'm gonna make the executive decision, we're gonna end early tonight.
Good man, Charlie Brown.
Okay. But, um, boy. You guys are easy guys. Okay, um, I know, you want to stress this out, cause you're really looking forward to the money you get from doing this. So Town Breakfast. Spelling announcements, the Town Breakfast. Um, all of us, I know got an email about that to, um, reach out to Anne Marie and let her know. And hopefully, I notice that not all of you did, uh, respond. It's a nice event, it's one of the few things that, you know, that you kind of get as being part of it, you get to meet some of the other, uh, reps down that are part of the town management and, uh, other good. So who is the zoning commissioner now?
The zoning administrator?
Ed?
Yeah, yes, Ben Ed.
He does it all. Yeah, you bet it was Ed. Uh, and that, but that is on Saturday morning at nine o'clock, uh, there may be trivia this year. We've been working on that.
There's gotta be trivia.
Yeah, well, that's right, we put the pressure on him. Lubricated, started to put the pressure.
I've often thought that lubrication was behind some of those questions.
Yes, indeed. And we, we have a consultant that lives up the road. Town tree lighting is just before the town council meeting on the third. And that's, that's a nice thing, it's up at, uh, you can come see the new tree that, uh, Dave has touted. And it's at six o'clock.
Right over here, Fountain Park.
Yeah, Fountain Park.
Yeah.
That's right. Upcoming Planning Commission meetings. That, uh, Monday, the twenty-second of December, that's Christmas week, are you still good for that? Okay. And then, uh, the next one after that, it's the twenty-sixth, Monday. And I would really like to think we'll be just about. All right. Nothing else, anybody got any announcements?
Bingo Tuesday, right?
Yes.
When's the meatloaf next?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Gotta make sure you come out for Drew's famous meatloaf. I just, I can't find the meatloaf, I won't be there. Okay, um, any other announcements? Okay, could I get a motion to, uh, turn? All right, thank you, Dave Grayson, second, by Glenn. All those, uh, favors signify by eye? Pose? Okay, the eyes have it, all right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.